Good evening, everyone, to the July 2022 Legislative Meeting of Media Borough Council. Please stand and join me in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us this evening. We have a special beginning to tonight’s meeting. We have a recognition ceremony for our chief, Martin Wasnick, who will be retiring from his position towards the end of this month. Mr. Mayor, I believe that you have a few words that you would like to say.
Sure. First off, remember him? He looks the same, doesn’t he?
Give me a hat. I don’t see any difference.
Okay, I’m going to make some remarks first and then read the proclamation and call you up. But first, a little bit of history. In 1985, as chair of the Public Safety Council, I was told to pick the next chief. That was a job since I was public safety. I chose a 28-year-old patrolman at that point who had covered about — at that time, we had averaged 200 burglars a year for the last six years, approximately. Now we’re down to two burglars a year over the last four years. That is quite an achievement. He was the leader that did this. The town was dead back in the late 1970s and early 1980s, and look at it now. So, thank you, Chief, for all your great years. Now, one after I read the presentation. I tried to memorize this, but I couldn’t. Ready? You want to read it for us?
That’s awful.
No, no. Should I skip something? Okay, or the whole thing?
That’s awful.
Okay. Martin J. Wasnick. Whereas Martin, Marty, Wasnick, retired police chief, Media Borough of Media, has served the law enforcement for the last 43 years and is well-respected by fellow enforcement officers, civilian employees, and residents. Whereas his career began in the borough in 1979 as a full-time patrol officer, he was promoted to chief in 1985. Whereas during the 10 years chief, he became certified instructor for the PA Municipal Police Officers Training and taught various courses of Administration of Justice, Delaware County Community College, Chief Police Association, Police Chiefs Association Southeast Pennsylvania, and he was president of Delaware County Police Chiefs Association. Whereas in 1979, Media Borough had one of the highest crime rates in the capital of Pennsylvania, especially per capita, too. Through dedicated service and proactive policing techniques, the chief installed to his officers, Media Borough is now one of the safest towns in the Commonwealth. Whereas the chief has received numerous accolades, awards, commendations, and recommendations throughout his career, including in 2008, the Delaware County William G. Widener Memorial Award for Excellence in Policing, and in 2009, the chief was the Bar Association’s Themis Award for Outstanding Contribution to the American System of Freedom Under the Law, and was named an honorary member of the Native Nativity BVM Knights of Columbus Demonstrating an Understanding of Principles and of the Knights of Columbus Charity. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Robert McMahon, on behalf of the Media Borough Council, both past and present, have recognized that Chief Marty Wasnick, for all his legacy, service in law enforcement for the Borough of Media, and express his deepest appreciation for his dedication and commitment to the residents of the Police Department, and extend Marty and his family the best wishes for many happy days in the future. Now, therefore, be it further resolved that a copy of this proclamation will be given to Chief Wasnick, and congratulations for all the years and everything you’ve done. Have a safe trip.
A lot of thank — a lot of thank yous first would be to my bride, Denise, who I’m fortunate enough that I’ve had one job as a cop for 43 years, I’ve had one wife for 42, and she put up with a lot of bullshit over the years. You know, I look at this impressive crowd, numerous residents that love me that are here tonight, they’re out in — they’re in the community center. I’m surprised they aren’t here to make sure I’m definitely leaving, certain ones. But I might change my mind. If you look in that back wall there, a pretty impressive crew, you guys. And they deserve a big thank you. We’ve been very, very fortunate to hire police officers in my tenure that are good people, and what makes a good cop is a good person. So, I’ve been very fortunate to have the crew that you see behind us there tonight against the wall. I want to extend my thanks to my producer that does my YouTube channel, Dave. Thank you, Dave. He put new batteries in the mics. He told me I could speak as long as I want, but I’m not going to go there. I want to thank the mayor and the present council, as well as those council people who have served in the past. If it wasn’t for the funding of Police Department, we weren’t — when I started as chief, we were a little shy on money, and we increased the manpower and womanpower. That’s one thing I’m proud of. We have a number of female officers, two sister-in-laws in the — I’m surprised they’re standing next to each other. They’re usually fighting, and yeah, they got guns, you know? Anyway.
Oh, my God.
Funding in the Police Department was a big part of it. As the mayor mentioned, you know, I still have it framed. I put it in the squad room the other day from my office. The headline in the newspaper when I started in 1979 said, “Media and Chester — or Chester and Media Lead Our County in Crime.” I read that when I started, and to be honest with you, they did give me a gun. I don’t even know if it worked, though I was like 21. But they were scary times in the late 70s, early 80s for this town, economically, socially, and crime, you know? Hey, they gave me a gun, and they gave me a bullet, and I was afraid to walk around town. Once that courthouse closed at 5:00, it was a little bit different town than we see today. And I want to thank those in the past and the present for making sure that you fund the law enforcement entity. You know, you can build Disney World, but if people don’t feel safe, they’re not going to come. You know, you can see that. There’s been a lot of money sunk into other areas in our county as far as federal funding, et cetera, et cetera, but it just doesn’t click. Here, locally, the local government sought to fund the law enforcement agency, and it’s paid off in dividends that you’ll reap rewards for in the past. I want to thank our previous manager, Jeff Smith, who I had a very close relationship with, as well as — and I believe it was Lieutenant Johnson on his night. Give a big shout-out to the new manager, Brittany. Let me tell you something, fresh air, very fresh air, as far as the — not just the Police Department, but the employees of the borough. I would once again try to — oh, great, the solicitor and engineer, great guys. Sorry about that. There’s not many other I can thank, but I would once again leave you with this. If the mayor and the council can get a little bit more tighter and talk to the cops, these people here, I’m telling you, if, if in fact they weren’t good, they wouldn’t be here. And they’re your most expensive expenditure and justified, no question about it. But spend a little time. You’re walking your dog, you’re walking by smoking a cigar, you come maybe 10 minutes early to one of your many meetings I know you got to attend. Stop in the PD, talk to them, shoot the, you know, BS with them. You’ll find out that they’re really intelligent, hard-working, dedicated, and quite frankly, pretty, pretty funny people. And I thank you all again. I appreciate it. Terry, good luck. I’ll see you maybe under a tree someday. Thank you all. If you don’t mind, you’re all getting overtime.
We will miss these moments.
I’m available for hire, like I said, elongated meetings, I can consult and probably help you with the next hire.
Yes.
For price.
For price.
Good night.
Good night.
That, folks, is what the end of an era looks like. Chief Wasnick is a friend of Media. He has been a wonderful servant for Media. He has helped to keep it safe, and he is right when he says that law enforcement was a big part of Media’s success story. I don’t know if anybody else has any comments they’d like to make, or some words about the chief now, now that he’s left and —
Yeah, I had some — I had some —
Apparently, he was afraid of the comments we might have, but I don’t know why.
Well, I’ve known him only in an official capacity for six months, obviously, but I feel like I’ve known him for the 25 years that I’ve lived in the borough. You know, one of the overriding factors that brought me to Media when I was looking for a place to settle down and raise a family was looking for someplace that was safe. And Media’s reputation at that time, in ’97, had come a 180 from just 15, 20 years earlier. Under his leadership, the community has become a shining example of good policing, combined with community leaders genuinely caring about their neighbors, cultivating those relationships that are necessary to keep things safe and orderly. On the rare occasions that I’ve had to call the police, they’ve been there very quickly, very professional, and have been incredibly helpful. I would say he’s the best of the borough, and while he’s moving on to greener pastures, the Blue are going to carry on well. The force of men and women that sadly have left, because I wanted to say this to them, you know, they’re incredible. They’re going to be capable of keeping peace while ensuring the safety of everybody, and a simple thank you isn’t really enough, but it’s going to have to do. And I just hope that — may God bless Denise and Marty and their whole family.
Thanks, Mark. Anybody else have any words? Mark has said quite a lot, and I think that we all share his sentiments.
Yeah, we do, and I think that the chief said a lot of — I would have just mirrored a lot of what he said, had he decided to stay long enough for us to listen. But he’s been around long enough that he knows how much to interact with us to be effective, and that’s been one of his great qualities. But anyway, so he’s off having fun, so there’s not much point in us, you know, complimenting him more than Mark already has so eloquently done, I think.
Thank you again, Mark. We have some housekeeping matters to attend to. The first housekeeping matter is approval of our meeting minutes from this past month. Do I hear a motion to approve the June workshop meeting minutes as submitted?
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is? Is there any discussion concerning the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the June 2, 2022 workshop meeting minutes as submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously. And as always, we had a council meeting later that same month. We have a set of meeting minutes for that meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the June 2022 council meeting minutes as submitted?
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the June 16, 2022 council meeting minutes as submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Before we get to — well, we are now in public comment, appropriate little floor. We do not have Karen Rapinoe with us tonight, but we have an able substitute for the evening, our borough manager, Brittany Foreman. Ms. Foreman, have we received any emails this evening, and if so, could you please read them to us?
We have not received any email comments.
Okay, thank you. I’ll also note that Councilmember Robinson is not with us tonight, and many of his items on his agenda will be handled by Councilmember Joy Washington. All right, so now is your opportunity for anybody who is present to come to the microphone, tell us who you are, what’s on your mind, and where you live. Seeing that we have no takers, we’ll move along then to the Borough Manager’s Report. Brittany Foreman.
Good evening. I just have one item to report, and I did email it out to most of you, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention about the DEP 902 Recycling Grant, and this is particularly for business education, business recycling education. Sometimes we get grants and we — you know, you guys vote on it, and then you may not see or hear about it for a while. And we actually got this grant back in 2020, and this — we’re actually ending the grant, like tomorrow is the last day that this grant period is. And I wanted to share all this great work and the great kind of products that are coming out of this for business recycling. And the whole grant paid for a lot of different things. What the first was the Grand Turk Monster 25-yard toe-behind leaf machine. It also paid for composting buckets and recycling buckets. It also paid for the composting education campaign, including the “Gotta Get a Bucket” video, and the second one that’s going to be coming out. And the remaining piece is earmarked for business recycling. The — I want to really thank Karen Tussack-Lux, who worked with Linda Rooney, worked closely with EAC, worked closely with the MBA, to develop a logo, it’s a flyer, a tri-hole like pamphlet that can be left with businesses, as well as a wall poster, talking about what should be recycled, what can’t be recycled. And all this is just — they developed it. It looks fantastic, and we’re going to be, in the fall, pushing a pretty hard campaign with our business community on how to recycle, what they should be recycling. And so I just wanted to share that with you, and that’s it.
Thank you, Ms. Foreman. Does any member of council have any questions or comments for Ms. Foreman at this time?
Just a comment. I’m very impressed by the quality of the materials that the staff put together. I think maybe with Linda’s help, yeah, it’s very sharp. I love the language. It’s so direct. I’m very impressed.
Okay, we’ll move along then to the Engineer’s Report. Mr. Mattson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just quickly before I begin my report, again, I just wanted to echo everybody’s comments and say what a great honor it’s been to work with Marty Wasnick. Media Borough was incorporated in 1850, and since he’s served for 43 years, he’s served as police chief for 25% of his life, which, when you think about it, it’s really quite an incredible accomplishment. So again, hats off to Marty and good luck with his family. My written report was submitted. There are a series of projects that are on the agenda tonight, so I won’t go into depth into them until it comes time to discuss those. But I did want to report that we have posted the MS-4 Vortex installations up on Penn Bid for bidding. The bid opening will be August 18th, and I think that will be one of the last of the larger capital projects that we’ll be posting this year, and then remainder of the year will be about implementation for all of these projects. So, pretty much on schedule with the implementation this year. It’s been a very aggressive schedule. We have a lot of things going on. So, unless there’s any other questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mattson. Does any member of council have any question for our engineer, Mr. Mattson? Hearing none, we’ll move along then to the Solicitor’s Report. Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to bring to council’s attention the need for council to adopt a updated stormwater ordinance no later than the September meeting of council, because it needs — a signed copy of the ordinance needs to be submitted to DEP with the borough’s MS-4 permit this year. And this is a statewide mandate, a DEP mandate. Every municipality in this county has to adopt these updated stormwater standards. And it is largely a matter of engineering. Mr. Mattson and I are working on it. There’s one item that council needs to kind of give direction on, and they don’t need to do it tonight, but they need to start thinking about. Going forward, when you issue a stormwater permit, there needs to be inspections every year for the first five years, and then every fifth year or third year, in any case. And those inspections either need to be done by borough staff, or the owner of the property needs to submit a written report that the borough needs to monitor and make sure they’re getting. So, you need to be thinking about what you prefer to do, and I don’t know if Mr. Mattson has suggestions on that or not, but it’s something to start thinking. And next month, I’ll need you to kind of give direction on that.
Certainly. Just some key points on this one. This is practically identical to the ordinance that was adopted in 2012 for the Crum Creek. There was no equivalent adopted for Ridley Creek. So this whole movement is to make all of the streams and creeks across Delaware County uniform with regards to their water quality. So the emphasis here is really on things like riparian buffers, things like different pollutants that we are no longer permitted or shouldn’t be putting in the stream in the first place. It’s really just a freshening up and tightening up the existing ordinances again. So, most of these ordinances, I think Darby was adopted in 2005, and Chad Ford, they did the Chester Creek in 2008. Crum was done in 2012. This is just an extension of that existing language that’s already on our books.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Does it significantly change — I believe the total maximum daily load, TMDL is the acronym they use, was principally sediment was the thing that we were aiming to control? Is that true? Has anything been added?
No. Again, this isn’t the change that — so those pollutants, those micronutrients, there are certain things in Delaware County that we just — that we don’t have. Some of the streams are what they call impaired, and this specific language is what they use. So there are some areas where there are certain chemical pollutants, PCBs and other things. We don’t have those here in Crum Creek or in Ridley Creek. Elsewhere in Delaware County, there may be areas where they’re polluted. In Goose Creek, I think in West Town, was the West Town they had them, primarily it’s sediment, primarily it’s sediment.
Okay, so nothing of substance will change with this revised ordinance, except for the permitting process in which we can decide to charge our own staff with doing so or allow contractors to submit reports on behalf of property owners that have such infrastructure?
True. The other big change, again, is really a matter of the selection of the size of a riparian buffer. In the past, DE — or pardon me, in the past, the conservation districts had required a 50-foot buffer, and then this had danced around to 150-foot buffer, and then it was — it was changed by ordinance a number of different times. So there’s a few options in the text where the town can opt. It varies because in some cases, in Delaware County at least, some of the townships have a lot of land with big properties. Here in Media, we have small properties. You can put a 150-foot riparian buffer and completely invalidate or dictate somebody’s property because they can’t do anything with it. So, there’s a little bit of flexibility in the code for boroughs versus large townships like Chad Ford, where they have a lot of room for —
It would be very interesting, Kevin, for you to show the Borough Council just how much of Media Borough would actually be affected by such a riparian buffer ordinance. There’s not a lot — I don’t know what we have that’s not underground, so I would like to see it at some point.
Certainly. Again, just to add to that, most of those areas are already covered by ordinances for sensitive area protection, like floodway and floodstream — pardon me, floodway and floodway and floodplain protections. Those ordinances are already on the books. Again, the MS-4 ordinances, they’re already here. They were adopted back in 2005 or so. So this is really, in my opinion, for waterfolly, it’s things like pet wastes, there are certain things in the code that they just want to make sure are enforceable, and again, the tracking of it is another one. In our current code, and I don’t want to belittle the point, but in our current code, there are provisions there, but this really extends the requirements for documentation for what is discharged in these streams.
Shocking. Thank you.
Does any other member have a comment or question for our solicitor at this time?
May I just add one comment? I just wanted to share that at the request of the solicitor, we’re going to be — administration is going to add this to the Public Works Committee agenda, so they’ll be talking about it later this month, and then they’ll be talking, you know, bringing it to workshop in August for you all.
Mr. Scott, what is that date by which we need to enact the updated ordinance?
It needs to be — a signed copy needs to be submitted by the end of September to DEP, which means your December legislative meeting. Did I say — did I just say December? September. September. Sorry.
All right, thank you. We’ll move along then to the Mayor’s Report.
Yes. Last month, we had 634 complaints. I’ll just read a couple of them. Assisted the public, 87. Other police departments, 39. Medical emergencies, 64. Parking complaints, 36. Traffic accidents, 22. And also, I want to bring up Dining Under the Stars. Because of all that’s going on in the world, we really up, I guess, the protection side of it. We now have three cops walking up and down every night at Dining Under the Stars. They’re averaging somewhere between 1,500 and 2,000 people that are on the street and inside the restaurants every week. Last night was a little less because of the weather. So, but people feel a lot safer. Also, they’re taking their police cars and putting them at the ends of the streets in different locations, so people know that the police are there. So, that’s something new we’ve decided, and it’s only because of what’s going on in the world that we decided to do it. So, that’s it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does any member of council have any questions or comment for the mayor at this time? Mr. Mayor, I think it might be worthwhile just showing that once again.
Can I see that, please? I didn’t see it.
Yeah, of course.
Aww.
Turn it this way, please. That’s —
Looks exactly the same to our handsome fellow.
That photo is so old that those glasses are now back in style.
As is the facial hair.
It is.
We expect to have some news about an appointment to the chief position, hopefully next month, so stay tuned on that. Okay.
I’m sorry. I do have one thing to say to the mayor. I’d like, Mr. Mayor, for you to convey to the chief our disappointment at not being able to speak to him and his staff about our thoughts about him. I really was sincerely disappointed that he cut out so quickly, so I hope we have another opportunity.
Okay, I thought several council people didn’t. He did.
Not while he was here.
No, no, no. Wow. I saw his face.
Yeah, I mean, not to his —
Well, he’s been away for quite a while.
Think about it, that’s all.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
I encouraged it, so.
Any other questions or comments for the mayor? Hearing none, moving to the council committee reports of our first section. Our first report is Properties, Public Works, and Fire, which is customarily given by Councilmember Robinson, who cannot be here tonight. So we are going to look a little bit down the table here towards Councilmember Joy Washington, and understanding that she might need a little bit of assistance on these matters, our manager and perhaps Councilmember Boyer will also pipe up at times. So, Joy?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. President. No, I’m not as tall as Paul, so, you know, I’m trying to do my best here. Thank you. And let’s see, I don’t think there are any pressing properties or public works and fire announcements besides the fire — we just saw the fire company’s newest paramedic vehicle. It looks great. I think it was just right outside, right by the entrance, and yeah, it looks really good. I’m not sure if it’s there anymore. I’m sure they moved it, but yeah, take a look at it whenever you can. All right? So, this next item is authorizing the advisement of bids for a facility maintenance agreement. So I guess I’ll set that up in the form of a motion, or we discuss first and then —
Well, we have a motion to advertise the advertisement — authorize the advertisement of bids for facility maintenance. And is there a second on the motion?
A second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I’ll call the question. All those in favor of authorizing the advertisement of bids for a facility maintenance agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Next item, I might need some context for this. It’s to award the 2022 road resurfacing project to MOR Construction Services in the amount of $128,765,800 and 80 cents.
All right, motion has been made. It has been — is there a second on the motion? There is a second on the motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? Is there any discussion on the motion?
Just a question to the engineer. Just a confirmation, this falls within the liquid fuels allocation from the state this year?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just, again, the clarification, the main bid was to support work on Baltimore Avenue to support the wayfinding project with the stamped asphalt. The ad alternate I recommended, which was just adopted, was for the repaving and ADA ramp upgrades at Monroe Street, but not chosen was Manchester Avenue. Just because we're trying to stretch the budget as far as it will go, and that's precisely how far it will go.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions or comments on the motion before I call it? Hearing none, all those in favor of awarding the 2022 road resurfacing project to MOR Construction Services in the amount of $128,765,080, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
All right, few more, thank you. Next item is to award South and Jefferson Streets Stormwater Project to Albert G. Cipollone Inc. in the amount of $305,019.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any call for discussion concerning the motion? Our engineer, Mr. Matson, would you just briefly describe what this project will do?
Certainly. Again, so this is sort of a dual project. Firstly, it's the grant supporting it comes from DEP's Growing Greener Fund. So it's the implementation of eight rain gardens in the area of Jefferson and South Avenue, and then the installation of some supporting facilities. But also, since it makes the use of curb bumpouts, it will throttle back both South and Jefferson Street to 20-foot cartways. So it will be the fulfillment also of what was earmarked in our traffic calming measure. So it's both stormwater and traffic calming in the same shot.
Thank you, Mr. Matson. Is there any comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of awarding the South and Jefferson Streets Stormwater Project to Albert G. Cipollini Incorporated in the amount of $305,019, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, next item. Award CDBG Orange Street Project to Lenai Electric Corporation in the amount of $131,346.
Motion's been made. Is there any discussion on the motion? I'm sorry, there's a second. There needs to be a second. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Takeoff. Mr. Matson, groundhog moment. If you would not mind just describing briefly what this project is about.
Certainly. This project is very simple. It's very simple. It's the installation of eight... pardon me, nine of our State Street-style lamps down Orange Street to the municipal boundary between Media Borough and Upper Providence. So again, the intention there is to continue or expand, both in this project and the project next on the agenda, the style and look of our State Street district in other areas of the town.
Thank you, Mr. Matson. Is there any other question or comment? All in favor of awarding the CDBG Orange Street Project grant to Lenai Electric Corporation in the amount of $131,346, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, final item. Award CDBG State Street Project to Lenai Electric Corporation in the amount of $356,346.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or questions concerning the motion? I'll toss this over to Mr. Matson again. He is certainly earning his pay tonight. Mr. Matson, could you give us a brief... Give our listeners and attendees a brief description of what this project is about?
Certainly. So this project comes with support from Delaware County, their Office of Housing and Community Development, in the form of a CDBG grant. This project also performs the installation of our State Street-style lamps down to the west end of town. So right now, our State Street lamps more or less stop just west of Orange Street. And this will continue both on the north side and south side down State Street, more or less stopping in the area of the Burlap and Bean. Also with this project are the upgrades to the ADA ramps that are noncompliant and some additional sidewalk in the area... pardon me, some additional sidewalk in the area, as you had, toward the west end of town. But again, it's lighting and then some concrete work in that west end of town.
Thank you, Mr. Matson. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of awarding the CDBG State Street Project to Lenai Electric Corporation in the amount of $356,346, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Washington, anything else on the report?
No, that's it for Paul. And for the next... Well, I have a whole lot of nothing for personnel announcements, so...
All right, we can take that out of turn. Are there any questions from members of council concerning either the personnel or the Properties, Public Works, and Fire reports? I just would... Just as a reminder for our residents, Councilmember Washington was correct about the new ambulance that was parked outside of the community center this evening. Those things don't come cheaply. The cost of that vehicle, it's a replacement vehicle, is $240,000. It's a lot of money, but it's a piece of equipment that saves lives. It's well worth it. The fire company was able to secure roughly about 10% grant that covered about 10% of the cost, which leaves them with a significant nut to pay over the next five years. So when you're thinking about contributing money, whether now or at the year's end, please think strongly about contributing money to our fire company because that money can be used to help pay for vital equipment, such as the new ambulance, which really strengthens their efforts in our community. All right then, so we can move on to the MBA. That report will be delivered by Vice President Romaine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few announcements from the Media Business Authority tonight. One is you may have noticed that Brick and Brew has reopened its doors after a lengthy renovation. They're doing an official ribbon-cutting ceremony on Saturday at 3:00 PM. So I encourage everyone to either go out to the ribbon-cutting ceremony or to check out the business to see the renovations. It looks really lovely from the outside. I have not personally checked it out, but they are reopening. Also, tomorrow, the MBA is going to be doing a little ceremony in front of the Media Theater. If you recall, back in June, there was an event that we put on, that the MBA put on to honor the service of Patrick and Jessie from the Media Theater. It was a nice little event at the Media Townhouse, but part of the proceeds from that event were donated to a charity of Jessie and Patrick's choice, and they chose to donate to the children's programs at Media Theater. So tomorrow, there will be a check presentation, I believe... Or was it actually today? Actually, I think it happened today. I'm sorry, today's Thursday, is my apologies. It actually happened early today. I'm sure it was lovely. That happened at 4:00 PM in front of the Media Theater, but a nice check was given from the MBA to the Media Theater Children's Program in honor of Patrick and Jessie and their service to the theater. Moving on to my agenda item tonight, taking off my MBA liaison hat. On Monday, I circulated a revised copy of a resolution that we discussed at the workshop meeting two weeks ago. This is a resolution urging our state lawmakers to protect the right to an abortion. As many of you know, recently, the Supreme Court gave a ruling overturning Roe v. Wade and the Dobbs cases, which has now really put the onus on the states to choose if an abortion is legal or not. I proposed a resolution and got some feedback from Councilperson Williamson and Councilperson Washington. Those edits have been made to that resolution. I hope you guys had a chance to review that since I circulated it on Monday. I do want to just quick sort of put this resolution into context. You know, this is just one effort that at least I know I will be making of many to make sure that the state of Pennsylvania does protect the right to an abortion to all individuals in this state. A resolution is just one thing. It is not the only thing. It is not going to change everything, but I think it's part of a larger statement that should be made to state makers or lawmakers in the state to continue to protect this right to all individuals. So I just want to say, you know, I know I personally will be doing a lot more, and I encourage my fellow councilpeople and anyone else out there to continue to look at ways on how they can make an impact and really make sure that this continues to be protected at a state level. But we have to start somewhere. And so that is sort of the context for why I'm proposing this resolution for us tonight. So I will make a motion to approve the resolution, 2022-43, urging state lawmakers to protect the right to an abortion.
Is there a second on the motion? There is.
No. Do you want me to read it?
I think that that would be appropriate.
Would you mind passing me your copy?
Oh, sure. I've handed my copy to our manager.
Hey, Brittany, can I pull it up on the phone? And now I'll be reading the resolution. Sorry about that. Okay, so the resolution is written as, "A resolution of Media Borough Delaware County urging state lawmakers to protect the right to an abortion in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Whereas the United States Supreme Court overturned 50 years of settled American law with the decision in Dobbs versus Jackson Health, thereby rejecting the idea that the Constitution guarantees..." This is an older copy. I think it's supposed to guarantee pregnant individuals the right to have control over their...
Brittany might have. Here we go.
Ah, yes. Let me start that sentence over. Apologies, counsel. "Whereas the United States Supreme Court overturned 50 years of settled American law with the decision in Dobbs versus Jackson Health, thereby rejecting the idea that the Constitution guarantees pregnant individuals the right to have control over their reproduction, including the right to an abortion, and ruled there would be no federal protection for a right to an abortion. And, whereas the Media Borough Council believes that all Media Borough residents have the right to privacy in making their medical decisions and reproductive decisions. And, whereas the Supreme Court decision could result in unintended consequences such as unsterile abortion and deaths resulting from illegal back alley abortions. And, whereas the Media Borough Council supports the rights of all individuals to have privacy in their medical, reproductive, and sexual choices, and the right of individuals to have control over their own bodies, and consider the ability to have an abortion to be a reproductive choice made by a pregnant individual in a medical matter between an individual and their doctor. And, whereas while abortion is currently legal in Pennsylvania, it is likely that the repeal of Roe v. Wade will result in the introduction of bills in the Pennsylvania General Assembly seeking to criminalize and outlaw abortions. And the Media Borough Council desires to advocate with our elected state representatives to ensure this remains, this right remains in Pennsylvania. And, whereas the Media Borough Council further desires to advocate with our elected federal representatives to advocate for the enactment of federal legislation protecting this right. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Media Borough Council strongly urges its elected federal and state representatives to pass legislation to ensure this is a right for all Americans. Further, it be resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be distributed to the following individuals holding elected office: President Joe Biden, U.S. Senator Robert Casey, U.S. Senator Patrick Toomey, U.S. Representative Mary Gay Scalen, Governor Tom Wolf, Pennsylvania State Senator Tim Kearney, Pennsylvania State Representative Christopher Quinn, Pennsylvania State Representative Jennifer O'Mara, and Delaware County Council." May I just add one thing real quickly? Sorry. You know, this resolution is really in line with other resolutions that this council has passed recently, including, you know, the gun safety resolution that Councilperson Washington brought up last month, and the resolution for Pride Day. You know, I think that... I think I would like to say that, you know, as a council, we really want to protect people's safety and their individual rights to privacy and to conduct their matter and their lives in a matter that is, you know, loving and caring and responsible. So I think that this is really in line with other resolutions that we have recently passed. Sorry.
Thank you. Does any member of council have any questions or comments concerning this motion?
Just the only comment is, thank you so much for bringing this forward.
Agreed.
I'll call the question then. All those in favor of approving resolution 2022-43, which will urge our state and federal lawmakers to protect a woman's right to choose an abortion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
No.
Are there any questions for Vice President Romaine? No? Okay, good. We'll move along then to my report, Community Development and Historic Architecture Review Board. I do not have any announcements with regard to either, but I do have a few action items. Items number two and three involve variance requests, zoning variance requests. One involves a property at 438 East Franklin Street, and the other is at 18 East Jefferson Street. 438 East Franklin Street is a small property that... And the house that sits on it is over 100 years old. It is a house that predates our zoning code by decades. The owner of the property would like to make some changes on the property. The changes include an addition on the back that will have the effect of increasing an existing zoning of noncompliance. And that is with the amount of impervious coverage on the property. It also has... It exceeds the amount of building coverage that is permitted on a property in that area. So it has pre-existing nonconformities. This matter was looked at by our Planning Commission, I think it was last month, and the Planning Commission made a recommendation that council oppose the zoning hearing, the zoning of the variance request. And in large part, they made that recommendation because they were struggling to understand what the basis for the hardship was on this property. We on council talked that over, and we still struggle with that. We do not understand what the basis of a hardship is on this property. It has not been explained to the Planning Commission nor to us despite opportunity to do so. So I find myself in the very unusual position, I think the first time in 14 and a half years, of actually making a motion concerning a zoning variance request. And that motion is for us to send our solicitor to the zoning hearing board this next week to oppose the requested variance. So I make that in the form of motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I'd like to expand a little bit on the president's point. The struggle on this has been there's been no exhibits, no written communication, nothing that would explain why this particular property should be exempted. That's the basis of a variance. No information provided. So we had no choice but to follow our responsibility, which is, if you demonstrate a reasonable hardship, well, listen. That's all.
Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the zoning variance for 438 East Franklin Street, please say aye.
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 That means you mean...
Sorry.
Having the solicitor oppose the...
Right, yeah, okay.
Let me rephrase that, if that's okay. All those in favor of having the solicitor oppose the zoning variance, yeah, for 438 East Franklin Street, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say nay. The motion has passed unanimously.
Item number two, not that I'm striving for consistency tonight, but item number two, I am also going to make a motion to send our solicitor to oppose the requested variance. This property is at 18 East Jefferson Street. Many of you probably know this property to look at it. It's on the south side of Jefferson Street, near its intersection with Monroe Street, I believe it is. It's a beautiful old Victorian home, and it sits adjacent to the Gailey Plaza Apartments. And that's important because alongside this property runs a walkway, which provides pedestrian access to parts of the Gailey Street Apartments. The owner of this property would like to put an addition along the side of the house that runs along that walkway. And we do have some sympathy... And we do have some sympathy for this request, because this is unlike many other properties that sits next to another property, and you have neighbors who have to live, have to live next to it and look at what is being placed there. There's a walkway here. Folks are not going to be, there is not a neighbor here. But here again, the applicant came before the planning commission, and the planning commission was concerned about this request in this regard. The problem here is with a side yard setback, and here, I think that it's at least 10 feet that needs to be accomplished as a side yard setback. It's a total of 25 feet, and the smallest, the smallest size permitted is 10 feet. Here, the owner of the property would like to build an addition that would go right up to the property line. When he was questioned why it is that he needed to have his addition right up to the property line, he really offered no good reason for it, other than that he would like for it to be so. We on council were troubled by that, because there needs to be some explanation that, as to why it is, why, what is being proposed is faced by a hardship, and we were not persuaded that there was a hardship here. The applicant did not come before council. We did not have the opportunity then to ask him for further information. So we're stuck with what we got. And what we got suffers that problem of a big ask with little explanation for why it is we should grant that ask or not oppose what's being requested. So here again, I would, I will make a motion that we send our solicitor to the zoning hearing board to oppose the requested zoning variance at 18 East Jefferson Street.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to add a nuance for the solicitor's benefit, because it was discussed at the council meeting, and I would make it a condition of the motion, so that, make sure you all agree with me as to what I heard. And that was, we weren't unsympathetic to the addition. It was the extent to which it didn't need to go to the lot line. What I recall is that they could achieve an eight-foot addition and still have a considerable amount of setback against the line. So if it comes up in the discussion, which it probably will, I think that that was, we thought they were being pigish, sort of, to be blunt, that they didn't need all that. I don't think we, I would hate for them to have to go through the whole process again for just a smaller porch, when they could work it out at the zoning hearing board and not have to go through the whole process again.
So your suggestion is that if the requested variance were limited to eight feet in width, whatever that, however that encroaches into the side yard setback, that the solicitor then would not oppose?
Yeah, would exceed to that, because that was a reasonable addition. That's the width of a functional porch. And it was not, not, I apologize, having like three to five to eight feet of setback, something like that.
All right. I'm happy to amend my motion to include that information.
So for the benefit of myself, can you restate what the new motion is?
Sure.
Like, is it to send the solicitor to oppose the zoning variance unless they agree to change to an eight-foot width?
Correct.
Okay.
She didn't get repeated.
Okay. Let me just repeat that, so we get that official, if that's okay. Sorry, I just want to make sure I understood that. Okay, so, all those in, do I need, do we need to resecond it, since it's a change motion?
Yes.
Sorry? Okay. So is there a second on the revised motion that President Hall put forth?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? Okay. All those in favor for sending the solicitor to oppose the zoning variance request for 18 East Jefferson Street unless they agree to change the width to eight feet, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion passed unanimously.
Now you know why it is that we usually don't oppose these things. No, we are opposing these things based upon the merits as we understand them today. And as Councilmember Williamson has pointed out, if the facts change, then we might not, we might not oppose one of the requested zoning variances. Item number four is really a housekeeping matter. This confirms borough maintenance responsibility of staffed asphalt along, at certain intersections on Baltimore Avenue. Our engineer touched upon this earlier today. We have the good fortune, as part of the wayfinding project, of improving some of the crosswalks along Baltimore Avenue. And they will be, we will have stamped asphalt there. It certainly will make it look better. And it also has a safety function as well, because it serves as a visual cue to motorists that there is an intersection and to be wary of pedestrians. But this part is going to be our responsibility to maintain. And therefore, we, as part of the project, we need to enter into an agreement that memorializes our responsibility to maintain those stamped asphalt crosswalks. So that's what this resolution does. It's housekeeping so that we can move forward with the project. And I make that in the form of a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 2022-44 confirming borough maintenance responsibilities of stamped asphalt wayfinding projects, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion has passed unanimously.
I have nothing else, unless anybody has any questions for me. We'll move along. We have the Public Safety, Recreation, and Board of Health report. Councilmember Kevin Boyer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a few announcements relating to REC and then Board of Health. As far as REC is concerned, those of you who were at Borough Field on July the 4th know we had a wonderful time. Thank you to REC for another great event. Thank you especially to the Gelman family and the Johnson family for all their hard work, as well as the other members of REC that showed up, and especially the train guy. Bob, what's his name, Jordan?
Yeah.
Yeah, he comes out of nowhere, he has his train, and it's wonderful, and then he disappears.
He begs to come.
Does he ask for gas or anything like that?
No, he doesn't ask for anything.
At some point, we should probably at least acknowledge the fact that he's done this.
He just likes going around in circles.
Yeah. Yeah, so anyway, that, it was, yeah, it was great, but he shows up, he, obviously there's some cost involved, but he, anyway, we are very appreciative to him and the other members who made a great effort, so thank you for that. As far as the Board of Health, Brittany and I and Jim Jeffrey met with some members of the county health department, including the director, Marie. And the gist of it is they are able to cover pretty much 90% of what Lori Devlin did, but the thing that they're not willing, well, not that they're not willing, but they don't really have the capacity to do yet, is enforced recycling. So Brittany and I had talked about maybe hiring Lori as kind of recycling officer in order to do recycling enforcement, especially given the grant that's coming up, where we're going to be looking at, well, actually need somebody to put a face behind the borough and actually go into businesses. And from what Brittany has told me, Lori has been doing that. So instead of going into restaurants and inspecting them and doing rodent, she will pretty much be involved with enforcing recycling, but I think there's a need, and this is something that we can finalize more next month during workshop, but it's something that just came up recently, because we had the meeting the other day with county health. So there really isn't a need for a health officer per se, because of all the duties that county is going to cover, but it does seem that there is this niche where we would have some kind of environmental officer that would be there to do some kind of recycling. So we'll work on some kind of a proposal, and I think Lori's going to do the same, and we'll bring something back to council, but she won't really be a health officer per se in that capacity. So that's the best explanation I can offer at this point. But it was nice to finally sit down with the county and find out what they are doing, and they are doing more than we thought. They're inspecting, and they're there for rodent control and all the other stuff that the health part did, except for the recycling part. So hopefully Lori will be able to help us, and again, especially given the grant that we're going to do, and there is this focus on business recycling, so I think she can kind of help us with that. So that's where we are with that part. Other than that, as far as public safety, we're still looking for police officers. We are not really ready to interview anyone yet. There's still some people coming through the channels, but nothing has come up with that yet. And then again, within the next few weeks, we'll have a new police chief, and we've spoken about that as well, what's going to happen with that. The other part of what I have for the public safety is a few mass gathering permits. The first is to ratify the Vacation Bible Church for the first, or Vacation Bible School for the First Baptist Church. This was, what, last week? So I make that in the form of a motion that we ratify the mass gathering permit. That has already happened.
Second.
Motion is made. It has been seconded. Is there any discussion concerning the motion? From time to time, we do have these motions where we are ratifying something post fact. This is something that has happened already, but we discussed this at our workshop meeting, and we gave a sense of council which we're ratifying tonight. So I'll call the question. All those in favor of ratifying the mass gathering permit application of the First Baptist Church Vacation Bible School, which was held a week ago, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The next is to approve a mass gathering permit for the MBA's Media Car Show. There is a change, per Liz.
Actually, we're going to undo that change.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I didn't flag you for that. But let's do it as is.
The 18th is...
We'll do it as the 18th with rain date on the 25th.
With the rain date on the 25th.
Yep. I'm sorry.
So this is the car show that we've held in the past. I think at workshop, we discussed where the roads would be blocked, and we came to agreement that this is what we've done in the past, and everybody seemed to be okay with it. So I would like to make that in the form of a motion to approve the mass gathering permit for the MBA's 2022 Media Car Show to be held on Sunday, September 25th, from 7 till 4, with a rain date of September the 25th. Oh, I'm sorry, did I say 25th first? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
18th, with a rain date the 25th.
Second.
Very good. The motion is made. It has been seconded. Is there any discussion concerning the motion? Hearing no call for discussion. All those in favor of approving the mass gathering permit application for the MBA's 2022 Media Car Show to be held on September 18th, which is a Sunday, or if it's a bad weather day, it will be held the following Sunday, the 25th. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
The last item, unless things have changed, Liz, but they haven't.
Not this one.
MBA is still up in the air about how to go about doing this and what date they want, and there's some other behind the scenes things. So we're going to kind of table this for tonight. If anything new comes up, we'll discuss it at Public Safety next week, and then I can bring it back to council in the workshop in August, because it doesn't happen until October, but there's some issues, so we're going to kind of table this one from now and not go forward to that.
And if it's okay, I can just add to context. You know, the economic environment is changing rapidly, and therefore financials to do some of these events are changing rapidly. So I think we just want to take the month, just really make sure that we have all our i's dotted, our t's crossed, to make sure that, you know, with everything going on, that it makes sense for the borough. So we're just going to table this.
And this is an event that we've done in the past, so it's not anything out of the ordinary. It's roughly the same time, so we'll wait to see what the MBA decides, and then I'll come back to the council when we've met, or if we find anything else and get a date. And I believe that concludes my report.
Thank you. Does any member of council have any questions for Councilmember Boyer at this time? Hearing no call for questions. We'll move along then to the Finance and Shatree Commission Report. That's Councilmember Peter Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll first talk about the status of our borough finances. The Finance Committee meeting, Finance Committee had a meeting just two days ago in which we reviewed the status of the borough's budget. In broad terms, at today's date, we're about $2.2 million to the good, in that we've revenues ahead of expenses for the course of the year. That's certainly a good position to be in, but we have some significant checks to pay in the fall toward our pensions and toward our municipal debt. So those two will be about $1.3 million, cutting into the $2.2 million surplus. The rest of the difference really comes from the rate at which we have been spending for our capital projects. We always budget energetically toward capital fund projects, but sometimes things happen. For instance, the mid-year budget update will include a big drop in the amount of money we expect to spend this year on our sidewalk project, because of the complications we've had in getting that going. So that's sort of a wild card. But right now, our budget looks pretty good, and one thing that should give you all comfort is that the, our earned income taxes, which are our principal tax, have been running well ahead of projections for the year. About $300,000 ahead of projection this way, only halfway through the year. So the local economy seems strong. Another item discussed in the Finance Committee meeting was the mid-year budget update. This is something we do regularly every year. Our budget includes hundreds of line items. Many of them are on target, some vary significantly. The principal moving numbers in this year's budget update, which we expect to submit as a formal resolution next month, would be increases in fuel expenses for our departments and the fire company, and a big drop in the cost of the CMAC project, the sidewalk project, because we're just not going to be able to pull it off this year. Those are the big two moving things. A last item. Last month, I made a uncareful remark that I want to backtrack on, and it's a good thing that I was talking about, but I got my story wrong. And this is, the borough has recently started moving some of its unrestricted funds into accounts at Pliget, which is a nonprofit government support agency that helps with the finances for municipalities throughout Pennsylvania. What I mistakenly said was that one of our council members initiated the contact, but it wasn't. It was the staff that initiated the contact and has carried it out throughout. And Paul Robinson, who happens to be an employee of Pliget, did not have anything to do with it. Just want to make sure that I spoke incorrectly, and I wanted to make sure that I apologized directly to Paul on that point. That said, the staff is very pleased with the account, and the Finance Committee meeting gave their blessing to add another million dollars to the account, which would total about $2 million total in the Pliget account, which, as I mentioned in the last meeting, is earning us currently about 10 times what we were making in our similar account previously. The last thing that the Finance Committee mentioned, talked about, was their staff's continuing, and we must say we encourage them, their initiative to create a pension RFP, so that we can look at whether our current pension providers are doing the best for the borough. Okay. Those are all my announcements. The next item is an action item. That's a ratification for the payment of bills from June. From the general fund, we drew $496,265.60. From the recreation fund, $7,884.88. From the capital fund, $313,725.35. I move ratification of June's bills.
Is there a second on the motion? I hear a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no call for discussion. All those in favor of payment of the borough's bills from this past June from the general recreation and capital funds in the amount specified by Councilmember Williamson, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay. The next item is a housekeeping matter. Really, it's the contract for the copier in the administration office. Nicely, even though the company that's being recommended is slightly more expensive than the lowest bid, their scope of work is much more robust, allowing the police department to have much more copier access, and it's a company they use now and they like very much. So we're going to recommend KDI. Those of you that saw the memo know that I'm just parroting what it said. As a, so that's in the form of a motion for a 46-month lease for copier, for a copier for the administration office.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
There is. Is there any discussion concerning the motion? Hearing no call for discussion. All those in favor of approving the proposal from KDI, I should say, accepting the proposal from KDI, for a 46- I should say, accepting the proposal from KDI, for a 46-month lease for a copier for the administrative office here at the borough, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, my last item is, I have a wistful one. Kathy LaRusso has decided to retire from the second of her important civic posts that she held for many years in the Borough of Media. That is for the Shade Tree Commission, that's why I'm making the announcement. But Kathy was also a longtime volunteer with the Media Historic Archives Commission as well. And those of you that know Kathy know that she's a very, very pleasant lady. She's always got a nice word, but then she's also, also had that, always that slight tilt of the head about life's ironies too. I think she's just been a wonderful person to have at the borough, and I'm going to miss her in all those meetings, and I think all of those of us that have gotten to know her will as well. But as a small measure of our debt, of our appreciation, we do have this metal plaque that we will be attaching at the base of a tree that we will be planting on her, on behalf of her long service at Dimension House. So I'm just letting you all know. Nice. That, well, I guess we're going to be, this is a motion I have to make, I have, we have to accept the resignation of Kathy LaRusso from the Shade Tree Commission. I make that motion with regret.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion concerning the motion? Only to echo what Peter has said about Kathy, she's a neighbor of mine, and those who know her understand that she does have a wicked sense of irony, and will miss that on both the Shade Tree as well as her other service to the borough. All right, unless there's any other comment or question, I'll call the question, all those who are in favor of accepting with regret the resignation of Kathy LaRusso from the Shade Tree Commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Unless there's questions, that concludes my remarks.
Are there any questions? Seeing that there aren't any, we'll move along then to the Environmental Advisory Council and Library Report. Councilmember Mark Pekoff.
Thank you, President Hall. The library does not meet in July, but they have sent out a survey asking for feedback for their strategic plan. It was sent out via email. It's also going to be included in the Borough Newsletter that'll be coming out next week. The library is really interested in connecting with people who may not be using their services or may not know about the services that are available to them. So I encourage you, if you receive that, please take the survey, and if you're interested in volunteering, there's an opportunity for you to give them your email. It's a terrific place. They are looking to be more of a central part of the borough. As far as the EAC goes, our Bee City Welcome Kit arrived. It included some wonderful books about pollinators and monarchs and bees. It also included a wonderful sign, I didn't bring it, Peter, I'll bring it next month, to be installed on the Pollinator Garden, which is being developed, which looks absolutely amazing. It's going to be right out here, you know, on borough property. There were also pamphlets and bookmarks, and we're looking at where that's all going to live, and we've contacted the library to see where and what we can do about getting that material there. Plans are being made for Bee City events throughout the year. Wednesday, August 3rd, we just confirmed that Bee City and most likely EAC, as well as some members of the library, will be the nonprofit featured at Dining Under the Stars. It is August 3rd, the Wednesday, I had the date wrong in the email that I sent. And as I discussed at workshop, one thing I think is really critical is a calendar to note many dates, special events and the like, so there are not last-minute items that come up. One thing that was really neat, a few weeks ago, there was a Firefly display at Glen Providence Park, and then one of the members of the Bee City Committee was looking to do something for Moth Week, and it just, it was somewhat last minute, not, not somewhat, it was last minute. And we want to just make sure that all of these are there so that we can plan ahead. And we're working on that, and I'm still trying to figure out how that could work and how we could set something up, you know, and where that, that could live, but that's, that's on my plans. The EAC shifting gears pretty significantly. They met last week. There was a presentation from Eve Miari of the Clean Air Council, as well as George Alexander. They presented the history of the Mariner 2 Pipeline, as well as the borough property through which it went, and the work that they've done to protect communities that are directly impacted. The Subcommittee for the $36,710.57 check from Sunoco has met twice, have developed several ideas. EAC does not meet in August, so the ideas will be brought forth to the September EAC meeting and most likely will be on the agenda for council consideration in October. I don't want to mention any of the specifics until they have a chance to go through the whole EAC. But that, that's something that I know council is very interested in, and it's on its way. It's just probably not going to be on our agenda till October. My first order of business, I just want to take a moment and again, thank everybody that helped push this to the point it's at right now. It started probably two years ago with members of the EAC, and I talk of the Ordinance Number 1155 of 2022, regulating and prohibiting the use of single-use plastic bags and straws by commercial establishments. It's about four pages long, so I don't think it necessary to read the whole thing, but it has been gone back and forth. We consulted businesses, I thank councilperson Romaine, I thank Dave Fairman, I thank the local business community for really opening eyes on the EAC to what some of the concerns were. In its final shape, we went back and forth with our solicitor, and I'm just very proud to bring this to the floor and to bring to a vote and make a motion that we adopt Ordinance 1155 of 2022. I'll read you the title. An ordinance of the Borough of Media, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, regulation and prohibiting the use of single-use plastic bags and single-use plastic straws by commercial establishments operating within the Borough of Media. I make that in the form of a motion.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion concerning the motion? I don't know if this was tactical or just modesty, but Mark, you left yourself out of that long list of folks that helped shepherd this through. So thank you, that is not an easy task. Appreciate your efforts. All right then, I'll call the question, all those in favor of approving Ordinance Number 1155 of 2022, which would regulate and prohibit the use of single-use plastic bags and straws by commercial establishments, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. My second order of business is to ratify a proposal from Coyopa Productions in the amount of $5,000 for a compost program video. As, as Ms. Foreman mentioned earlier, the, the grant from which this money came is expiring tomorrow, so we did get a sense at workshop that this was supported, and tonight we're just ratifying it. And this is the same organization that put together Got to Get a Bucket. If you haven't seen it, look it up, it's fabulous. And this is going to build on that, I believe, and extend it a little bit further, explaining, I think, some of the specifics of composting in the borough. So I make that in the form of a motion to ratify that proposal.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
There is. Is there any discussion concerning the motion? Hearing none, call the question, all those in favor of ratifying the proposal from Coyopa Productions in the amount of $5,000 for a compost program video, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
That concludes my business for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any, what, any member of council have any questions or comments for Councilmember Pekoff? Seeing that there are none, we now have the opportunity for our second installment, a public comment and privilege of the floor. Ms. Foreman, have we received any requests by email or any questions by way of email since the beginning of tonight's meeting?
We have not.
And as always, if not for tonight, then for future nights, the address to which you may send your questions or comments is comments@mediaborough.com. Comments@mediaborough.com. So now, if there's anybody who is present and they wish to speak, please come to the microphone, tell us who you are, where you live, and what's on your mind.
Michael Straugh, 499 West Jefferson Street, Apartment 507, Media Borough. I simply wanted to actually speak on the Sunoco Pipeline Check. I wanted to wait until Councilman Pekoff made his report to speak on it. Seeing that there was nothing new to report on it, I wanted to just state a position that I had, that I wanted to share with all of you in regards to the check. I have heard over the past few months of the idea of possibly donating the, the money or possibly utilizing it in the borough for environmental projects, and I just wanted to weigh in and just let you know, at least as one citizen, that I think that the money should be used in the borough for environmental projects. I think that donating it, although is nice, I don't think it, in the end of the day, will help impact the borough citizens of Media as, as well as it should. Although what happened was wrong for Sunoco to do, it still occurred on Media Borough land, and I think that because it occurred on Media Borough land, that money should be utilized to better the environment here in Media Borough. There are many different ideas that you can utilize them for, one of which could be advertising and telling people about the new plastic ordinance. Another could be helping with your proposed park changes on Plum Street. There are many opportunities that you can utilize these funds for, maybe even for your open space plan. I don't know, but I think the, the, the money should be here for Media Borough residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Straugh. I believe if I, if I'm not in, you know, I just want to thank you for emphasizing that. That was the direction from council for that money, so thank you very much. Is that correct?
All right, Mr. Jordan, same rules apply.
Recently, there was construction on Third and Monroe Street.
So Michael Jordan, North Jackson Street.
Mr. President.
North Monroe Street.
North Monroe, you got it. Can you, Mr. President, tell the residents what this construction is? It is puzzling to some, even myself.
Where is that, Michael?
Monroe, on Monroe Street and Third.
Are you talking about the painted intersection with the delineators?
The intersection, the intersection. The intersection, yes. Oh. The engineer can tell us.
I sure can. Again, so, and the, I think it was the tail end of 2020, the council adopted a traffic calming plan, and I think there were a total of 30, six different measures around town that are implementations to help calm traffic, slow it down, try to make the borough safer. This is one of them. This is the first one. This is sort of a sister project to what you see at Third and Jackson, again, where there was, there was a painting, a mural in the street, pardon me. Again, it's in the same family. This is the striping, delineation, installation of plastics leaders to help throttle down traffic, and it's really an idea that was plucked out of the traffic calming plan.
Is it going to be done on all of those streets and Monroe Street?
No, but there'll be select installations throughout town similar to that.
Okay.
Some of them, again, we're doing, just to give you a little bit of background, some of these we're doing as sort of soften, soft implementations. For instance, the idea that delineators aren't something that are, they're really hard and fast, that would stop a car. The project that I mentioned earlier tonight at South and Jefferson, Jefferson is a very big concern for the residents that are down there as far as traffic, so there's, there's going to be hard curbing. So that curb will be a 20-foot, pardon me, a 20-foot cartway, but it'll be curbed. So again, the idea of a delineator which could potentially be hit or knocked over or some paint which may or may not be, you know, a really solid barrier for going in. So some of these applications are softer, and some of them are more literally and figuratively concrete. Some of them are more concrete, I mean, in both ways.
I live at Sixth and Monroe Street, and the traffic there comes down at maybe 35, 40 miles an hour. In fact, a woman was killed there a number of years ago. Still, you know, they come down there, unbelievable.
So again, like I said, these ideas are, they're sort of recipes, right? And again, we are, to some degree, we're learning as other communities move with implementations, things like the curb bump outs, things like delineators, things like local circle, traffic circles, and if they're successful, then we'll apply them elsewhere. But again, even with our communication with other communities, it's a little bit, I don't want to say trial and error, but it's a little bit of experiment and learning and then getting feedback from the community. So with the current soft implementations that we're moving forward with on Jefferson, we've posted a feedback and solicitation survey from local residents just, just to get the learning loop back. So we can get, get information, do people like these things, do they think they're effective, you know, so again, I, we have a very nice plan that was put together by some traffic consultants. They listed a whole host of things, and again, we are implementing them, but at the same time, trying to dose them correctly and learn while we're, while we're doing them.
Kevin, if I can, I just wanted to add a little bit of emphasis on the feedback piece. So for everything that Kevin just mentioned with the softer implementation items, or you can call them temporary implementation items, this Third and Monroe one is, is one of them. We're going to put some up on Jefferson, some up on Olive and Ridge, and a newsletter, in the newsletter in July that's going out, you'll see communication from the borough saying, hey, these are the temporary traffic calming measures, please give us your feedback. Here, go to the website, submit a survey, let us know how you feel about them. So thank you for bringing it up, and please, you know, if you see it around town, please go on our website and let us know how you, if it's working, how, how you feel about it, if it's actually slowing down traffic, things like that.
Michael, thank you. Anybody else who wishes to make a comment to our question for media, for council at this time? Seeing that we have none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Everyone stay cool. See you in August.